Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on September 21st, 2023. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So, for the public, we do have one council member, Councilmember Greenstein, who's attending remotely. And our deputy mayor is out of town and has an excuse absence tonight. With that, we have an agenda and consent agenda in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda and consent agenda. It's public comment time. We have received no written public comments and no one signed up for public comment. But is there anyone wishing to address the council today? Seeing none, we'll go into our next agenda, which is a proclamation, proclamation for emergency preparedness month.
Whereas in the Pacific Northwest, we face the threat of earthquakes, volcanic eruptions, weather events, floods, and human tragedies with unpredictable consequences which can disrupt power, communications, and travel infrastructure. And?
Whereas first responders may not always be able to reach community members quickly in an emergency or disaster. And?
Whereas the Lacey community can take action to prepare, respond, and recover from any natural or human disaster. The more who are prepared, the safer we stay and the faster our community will recover. And?
Whereas we encourage community members to learn more about preparedness by attending local events and visiting the ready.gov website to make a family preparedness plan, create an emergency kit and evacuation plan, prepare for local hazards, and teach youth about emergency education. And?
Whereas we encourage the community to visit the Federal Emergency Management Agency's website, FEMA.gov, to learn more about this year's theme, helping older adults prepare for disaster. And?
Whereas Lacey community members who are prepared to meet any emergency or disaster can be a positive influence on their neighbors by sharing their preparedness story and encouraging their participation of friends, family, and coworkers. Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize the month of September 2023 as Emergency Preparedness Month in Lacey. And encourage all community members to prepare themselves, their families, and their neighbors for the consequences of an emergency. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date, September 21st, 2023.
Do we have? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you for proclaiming September as the Emergency Preparedness Month. I really wish that Bracy DeLeonardo or Ed Taylor, our two emergency management designated HR staff, could have come today. Unfortunately, you get me as the substitute. I know enough to be dangerous at this point about emergency response. But it is a very important joint effort at the city. I am learning a ton in my role as the HR Director. Emergency management wasn't my background, but I do believe in it. I'm a part of this community. And it's a big collaboration of all of our department employees, our regional partners. I do want to highlight right now, we're going through a major project, so it's timely to have this as the Emergency Preparedness Month. We've kicked off our comprehensive emergency management plan update with an outside consultant. That'll not only help us have a response plan to use, but also give us some update on trainings and how to coordinate our regional and volunteer plans as well. And then two other reminders, we have the Great Shakeout coming up in October. People probably know about the Great Shakeout. It's happening on October 19th at 10:19 a.m. We encourage everybody to participate in the drill, whether you're at home, work at school. And then this Saturday is the Annual Emergency Preparedness Expo from 10:00 to 2:00 at Peter G. Smith Elementary School in Tom Waters. So if you didn't know and you want to come join us and see what it's all about, please do. Anyway, thank you very much for proclaiming this month as Emergency Preparedness Month.
Thank you. You know, we always say, you know, remember last time we had the big earthquake and all the, all the things that go behind making sure your community is safe when you have a big disaster. And, you know, we have some amazing members right here in this community that do a lot of work, you know, and we're about, a little bit later about ready to talk about cooperation agreement with, within the Nisqually Tribe. And I hopefully that this is something that we continue to work, you know, work together on because we, we know it's just a matter of time on when we're going to have another major earthquake and everyone, it's going to be all hands on deck to make sure that our community is safe and we have proper communication and we're doing the things we can to, to save lives. So it's important that we, we talk about preparedness. Okay, next on is, upon our agenda is a resolution, Resolution 1137 for a land acknowledgement policy. Shannon.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is Resolution 1137. This is a resolution that would establish a land acknowledgement policy in the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual. Staff recommends taking two steps tonight. The first would be to adopt Resolution 1137, adding the land acknowledgement policy to the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual. And then the second step following that first step would be to provide direction on the implementation of the policy, if adopted, through a motion. And this would be to add the abbreviated land acknowledgement to all city council meeting agendas, to add the land acknowledgement as an agenda item on regular and work session meetings, which could be read at the discretion of the presiding officer, and to include the full land acknowledgement in future plans adopted by the City, Lacey City Council. This item was previously reviewed by the Lacey City Council at a work session on July 27th, 2023. And prior to that, it was reviewed by the Commission on Equity, and the Commission on Equity recommended the adoption of the policy. As reviewed previously, the policy is in its current state, written as permissive and not declarative. I do want to extend a huge amount of gratitude and appreciation to the Nisqually Indian Tribe, who did provide the foundation as well as support and input throughout this process. The policy provides guidance on how to use the land acknowledgement in three specific areas for the city. The first is for city meetings, events, and programming. The second is for city plans, reports, and other adopted documents. And the third is for city signage, markers, maps, and other materials. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the city council has on this item.
Is there any questions? Well, I'll start off with a, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 1137?
I would move to approve Resolution 1137 adopting the land acknowledgement policy in the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I just, I for one will be voting yes for this. I think it's been a long time coming. It's long overdue. And how elegant that it's on the same evening that we have Nisqually Tribe, all members here to talk about another project. So I'm very touched and moved by this.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. On this, the second motion, I, I would like to move that we proceed with the option one of the direction of the staff that, in the section that the staff report find further direction for Lacey's considered council, the direction one, two, three, and four, as recommended. But I want to make sure that, that when an abbreviated land acknowledgement, instead of the abbreviated management to, to say, motion to add a, an abbreviated land acknowledgement, there's a little bit difference in the two. That we have a, one's prescribed as, in this as, it is an abbreviated land acknowledgement, but it's, it's still, if we prescribe it as that, is that what we're saying every, every single time as the abbreviated? Or can, I think it'd be, make more sense to say, "and abbreviated," and let up to the, the presiding officer or whoever's running the meeting at the time to say, to be able to determine what they want, to be able to, you know, acknowledge within that abbreviated land acknowledgement. Does that make sense?
So the, the motion as presented, and maybe I'm just seeking some clarification here, Mayor, is to have the abbreviated land acknowledgement, which is included in the policy. There is the full, and then there is an abbreviated version. And that would be added on to the agenda. So it would just be the abbreviated, per the policy, land acknowledgement would be included on all of the agendas for our committee meetings, for our work sessions, and then for our regular meetings.
Great, but then does the presiding officer read the entire abbreviated, or can they read a portion of the abbreviated to start a meeting?
So the, the second direction would be that it would be at the discretion of the presiding officer to read it out loud. And so certainly if the presiding officer was, you know, looking to, to read the full or the abbreviated, and it'd be up to this council at this, their discretion if they wanted to do something in between.
Okay, that's good for clarification. I just want to understand what was being prescribed there. Yeah. Yeah, we're good.
Second.
Yep, I, I made the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? The motion is to, is to, it's the addition, so it's to provide staff with further items, is to give direction for, direction one, direction two, and direction three, and direction four, as recommended in the staff report.
Just to make sure you've had all of them, and you've got a second?
In the second. Any discussion? And all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries as well. Great. Okay, next up on our agenda is the mayor's report. And I just met with the 2023, 2024 Youth Council. And Sadie didn't come up here and just give a, a quick outline of, of this year's youth council. And there's going to be a, a couple of motions that are going to be on the floor to approve the full youth council members and also appointment for the youth members to advisory boards. Sadie?
Hi, good evening, Council. My name's Sadie Siglin. I am the Lacey Youth Council Staff Representative. And I am here to introduce the nine youth council members we have this year, and then recommend four youth council members for appointments as youth representatives on our advisory boards. Our first youth council member, Sarah Towne, is a senior from North Thurston High School. This will be her third year on the Lacey Youth Council, and she has been elected by her council members as the youth mayor. So we have her. Next is Zuri Ramirez Placina, who is a junior at North Thurston High School. Zuri is a second-year Lacey Youth Council member and has been elected by his fellow council members as the deputy mayor of the youth council. Next, we have Iliana Allen, who is a junior at Pope John Paul II High School. She has been elected by her youth council peers to be the youth council clerk this year. We also have Nathaniel Clay, who is a senior from Timberline High School, and this is his second year returning to the Lacey Youth Council. Next, Samuel Tatarian is a junior at Timberline High School. We have Sophie Allard, who is also a junior at Timberline High School. Anthony Santiago, who is a senior at River Ridge High School. Rory Line, who is a senior at Timberline High School and a second-year returning member to the Lacey Youth Council. And Nico Hegwig, who is a junior at Timberline High School. In addition to these nine members, we have four who have been recommended to serve on our advisory boards as youth members. We have Nathaniel Clay, who's recommended to serve as the Parks Culture and Recreation Board Representative. Samuel Tatarian, who's recommended to serve as the Commission on Equity Representative. Sophie Allard, who is recommended to serve as the Library Board Representative. And Anthony Santiago, who is recommended to serve as the Historical Commission Representative.
Great. So it'd be my motion that we appoint the youth members as, as just given by Sadie to the youth council. And the first motion, the, the first motion is to point the full youth council. Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
It's exciting that several of these students are returning to the youth council, so we have some continuity in that knowledge base. That's really great to see.
Yes, we have our first third-year returning member this year, which is really exciting for us.
Yeah, it's great that now she's the mayor as well. I just, I just met, of course, I know them all, but I just did a question and answer with them tonight, and they're a very impressive group. Is there any other discussion?
I would just say the six of the nine are from Timberline and River Ridge. My kids went.
Yep.
I know Andy's in North Thurston.
I did. I've talked about my time at North Thurston High School tonight. Okay, all in favor of that motion to appoint the full youth council signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. And my next motion is to point the youth members to the advisory boards as outlined by Sadie. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would say all four were from the two schools I named before.
Well, and one of the things that we talked about, we, in the years past, we did have on different youth, oh, different youth members pointing to our youth councils, but it was so much, it was very difficult to have continuity there. And the fact that now they're coming from our youth council, it just makes so much more sense. Councilmember Greenstein?
Good question. Is there a reason that we don't have a youth member on the planning commission?
Yeah, we, we, I, I brought this up too. Rick?
This has been a conversation before, several times before, and, and it was related to the continuity of the work of the planning commission and the, the volume of work as well as, you know, dealing with the land use policies and those type of things. And so in the past, prior to having the youth council created, the, the decision was not to have an advisory member of the planning commission because of that schedule.
Yeah, and I, I've gone back and forth. Go ahead.
I would say it would be, it would be a pretty heavy load for one of the students on the, on the student, city, on this council, on the youth council, to also represent at the, at that level, because it is, it is a pretty heavy workload.
Yeah, I've, I've gone back and forth on this as well. I've also thought, you know, maybe we should have the youth council mayor sit as a non-voting member on our council as well. But then you're also still asking a lot, you know, of them and their time. And so we've gone, you know, it's just, it's a lot of work. And I, I, you know, as we're getting this youth council that's up and going, they're doing some lot of great things this year. You know, maybe at some time in the future, we have someone ambitious, but at this point.
And then one thing I will add too, as the Community Economic Development Department's getting ready to undertake their engagement strategy and update of the, the conferencey plan for the 2025 update, part of that effort though is to connect with our advisory boards as well in a coordinated fashion, including the youth council, to get them, get their input and also have them as a vehicle to get broader input from, from their, from, you know, the community they represent. So there is going to be efforts to coordinate that and bring those all up through the planning commission without necessarily having a specific member being in the, being a representative.
I would add that we do recognize the importance of the planning commission because there's five of us out of seven that were, that served on that planning commission. You know, the other thing I just want to say before we take this vote, as we, last year's mayor of the youth council just asked for a lev recommendation for him to be pointing to his college advise, board. And, and so it's really cool to see that we're, we're building young we're building young leaders, you know, in our community that's now going on and taking the next step, and he said, you know, it was his work on this Youth Council that got him interested, and continue to be interested on, on his board at his college, so, yeah, that's great. So, there's a motion and a second to appoint the four Youth Council, Youth Council members to the advisory boards, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie. So next up is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, and we have quite a few items on the, the City Manager's Report tonight. The, the first item is something I'm, I'm very excited about, and, and enthusiastic that it's here before the council. It's been alluded to earlier in the meeting as well, and as the council is aware that recently with the work in, the regular, or special meeting with the Nisqually Tribal Council, and the conversation about their plans for Quimouth Village and Quimouth Resort, and the council authorizing a letter of support for that application, tonight's that next step to bring forward a cooperation agreement between the City of Lacy and the Nisqually Indian Tribe. And again, it's just building off of that accord that was created and, and entered into between the Nisqually Indian Tribal Council and the City of Lacy back in 2014.
Fourteen.
And, so again, tonight's a, a great milestone, and before I turn it over to Dave to go over the high points of the cooperation agreement for council to take action on, I would like to recognize Chairman Frank of the Nisqually Indian Tribal Council, and would love to be able to offer him the opportunity to give a, say a few words, and introduce the design team, and provide a little bit of a presentation overview of the project.
I want to bring up Treasure Iel also, along with Dave. And our CEO of Medicine Creek Enterprises, Bob Iel as well. I want to bring Bob up too, this is a, a huge project for Nisqually. I want to thank you, City of Lacy, for allowing us here tonight to have this opportunity. Many folks, you guys have seen the Hawksbury Project for many years, we know there's been a lot of conversation on what that could be, and the Nisqually Tribe is at, in a good place right now and ready to move forward together with the City of Lacy, really develop something that is going to benefit the city for the next seven generations, you know, the city, the tribe, the county, and provide jobs and opportunities to everybody in this great city that we live in. I think about the work we're doing with the North Thurston School District, it's amazing to see a Nisqually flag hanging at every school, even though we got Timberline here, we got North Thurston. I'm not going to say where Bob's from, I think Tumwater may be right, but, I'm just, yeah, and, but no, you know, we always like to joke about that, and, you know, it's really, you know, something I think of our elders, my father, many of our Nisqually people who made a lot of sacrifices for us to be here today still, and have this opportunity. And I'll, Treasure Iel, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, well, thanks, thanks Chairman. This is just an awesome opportunity, the Nisqually Tribe is really excited, it looks like we've got a pretty bright future here in, in Lacy, and we've really appreciated the camaraderie we've had with the Lacy City Council here. Rick Walk, working with you though, over the last few years, has been really, really amazing, so, thank you, everybody.
Say a few words to Bob?
Yes, please do.
Well, I didn't expect you to call me up here today, but I, I do appreciate it, and I, I appreciate the recognition, and, and I know we all really appreciate the cooperation that we're, we're, we're having with, with the City of Lacy. I know we can make this, this an outstanding project that's going to benefit all of us, and, and really look forward to continuing the, the relationship, so.
Did you say introduce my, my team here?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I will definitely introduce Mr. David Wolf here, Nisqually Legal, and Ryan Sawyer as well, who are going to do a little presentation here for you guys, I believe.
Yep.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, council members, and thank you to the Nisqually Tribe for entrusting us to help them with their master plan. I'm Joe Barafaldi, I am with HBG Design, and we have been working pretty extensively with the tribe to develop the master plan for the Quimouth Resort and Village. Let's see. If you could move to the next slide. The tribe has submitted requests for federal approvals to the Bureau of Indian Affairs for two separate projects, one referred to as the Quimouth Casino Resort, and separately the Quimouth Village. If you could move to the next slide. This project is on the property that has been referred to previously as the Lacy Gateway Town Center. It is bounded by I-5 to the south, Marvin Road to the east, Britton Hot, Britton Parkway to the north, and Gateway Boulevard to the west, right as you can see there, near the Cabelas right off I-5. While it is submitted as two applications, it's really envisioned as one project. And in such, we were looking to create some synergies between the resort and the Cabelas, which have a regional draw, and, and supplement that with programs along a live-work-play theme, and so really use it as an economic driver for the tribe, for the region, to bring people from, to this, to the site, excuse me. And as a development of the Nisqually people, it was really an opportunity to continue to tell their story, and share that with, with the community, and as such, we've developed a couple guiding principles that I think you'll see come through, and, and some of the images we'll share. One is to listen to the land, one is to respect and celebrate the cultural connection, and finally to respond to changes and alternatives, and really be open to different ways of looking at land use. If you could move to the next slide. So the first piece of the project is the casino resort. From an access perspective, it is utilizing some of the existing infrastructure, including the roadway that comes in from Marvin, the access from the highway access road, and then the connection on the west to Gateway Boulevard, and how the Cabelas is accessed. Looking at the development itself, its heart is a casino, about 155,000 square feet of casino space, about 42,000 square feet of food and beverage, 270,000 square feet of hotel, which is 350 hotel rooms. And then something we've been told is kind of a real need in the area, is some pretty extensive entertainment and meeting space. The building is positioned at the high point of this piece of property, and we saw that as a real opportunity to have views away from the property, and you can see the orientation of the casino and the cultural center are intentional in focusing the attention toward Mount Rainier, which has been kind of a, an icon for the region, for the Nisqually people for centuries. Being located at the high point, it allows us to step the building down the hill somewhat gracefully, and provide opportunities for some of those food and beverage facilities to have views out away from the site, and then stepping it back and placing it on the high point allows great views in from the freeway. The next slide, please. There are two alternatives within the Quimouth Village Plan. This is a commercial-heavy mixed-use development, and working from your right to left, off of Marvin Road, there's a series of smaller-scale retail, and a travel center to the south. To the north, there's some neighborhood grocery that supports some of the housing that's on the property, and really what ties into the cultural center on the other property is a cultural village that we saw as a real mixed-use live-work environment, where you could have boutique retail, artist studios, an opportunity for housing integrated, and kind of a, a created somewhat urban environment there with lower-scale buildings, a, a kind of a destination place for retail and artists, where you could go and wander the afternoon. Moving further to the west, you have some larger-scale multifamily housing, and then on the far west part of the site, sorry, between the multifamily housing and the bigger box on the far west is a family entertainment center concept. So again, a regional draw where you could have movie theaters, bowling alleys, go-karts, there's a lot of different models for those types of developments, and we'll look at the market with the, with the tribe and see what best fits. And then to the far west, some large box retail, golf driving range here to the south, and potentially a car dealership. So a wide range of uses, all intending to drive visitors and guests to the property and create that impact. Next slide, please, thank you. The other option is more of a recreation-heavy mixed-use development. The program space on the right-hand side of the slide is, is largely the same, but as you move to the west, we've left some land undeveloped. Next to the undeveloped land is a large indoor sports complex, and this is similar to the City of Lacy indoor sports complex that was developed in 2019. I think a similar type of program, some of those developments would fit here if that's part of the agreement. And then further to the left, outdoor recreation, you can see four soccer fields, a baseball or softball complex, but again, an opportunity to create a regional draw, host tournaments, and keep the land as public as we can. And in the top-left corner, a school. Next slide, please. So we did want to share, as we had said, this is envisioned as an entire complex, and this is an image of how the resort complex works with the commercial-heavy complex. You can see the roadways are integrated, they're using similar access points. And then the final slide is the resort complex with the recreational uses. And I think in either alternative, there's a real long-term plan to have a economic development for the region, a support of local contractors, builders, suppliers, and an ability to create jobs on this property for, for a, a long time, and, and finally to help drive tribal revenue and sustainability. And I know Chairman mentioned this, something I've learned in my work with, with tribes, is that concept of seven generations, that, that this, decisions the tribes make are not about financial returns next quarter, they're about how they can continue to benefit their community for many generations to come, and, and I think that's the vision for the options we've shared with you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave to kind of go through the high points of the cooperation agreement, and, and offer that for the council's decision tonight.
Thanks, Rick. Mr. Mayor, council members, so, before the council tonight is an agreement, that is a cooperation agreement between the City of Lacy and the Nisqually Indian Tribe, which would address the development of these properties that you've just seen, and mitigate potential impacts to the city. And so, again, the underscore of the agreement is that it is a cooperation agreement, that the parties act in good faith going through the challenges of development. One of the, some of the topics that the cooperation agreement does address, and that the cooperation agreement looks forward and envisions a series of forthcoming interlocal agreements between the parties to, to address these various topics. One of which, of course, is the provision of emergency services, including mutual aid response by emergency service providers, the coordination and payment of all costs related to law enforcement, prosecution, court services, public defense, et cetera. The agreement identifies that it's expected that fire response services would be provided by Lacy Fire District III, which currently provides such services to tribal properties. It contemplates agreements discussing and dealing with the coordination, design, and maintenance of city utilities, or utilities, whether they be city or tribal, water supplies, sewer collection, wastewater, et cetera. The agreement does establish that all roadways would be owned and maintained by the tribe. It discusses the potential for impacts to the city related to traffic, community services, land use compatibility that would be caused by the development. The tribe does intend to administer all permitting on the properties, which would be subject to the tribe's building codes and other tribal laws, but the agreement contemplates that the parties would meet and discuss how those would square with the city's existing codes. The, the tribe comments on the tax-sharing compact, which was an agreement between the Nisqually Tribe and the State of Washington back in 2021, whereby the tribe can designate certain properties subject to the compact, which authorized the sharing of state retail sales and use taxes, and certain BNO taxes that are derived between, or derived from non-tribal member to non-tribal member transactions. In the agreement, the tribe does agree to designate all lands within the properties subject to the compact. The agreement has an overarching, well, the, the tribe agrees in, in a section designated to itself to reimburse the city for any and all of the actual costs and impacts borne by the city in providing services to this area. The city does agree to not oppose any efforts by the tribe to cause the secretary to accept trust title to the tribal properties for the benefit of the tribe. Everything else in the agreement is pretty standard contract severability clauses, dispute resolution, et cetera, but the city is, the, the request is that the City Council authorize the city man, the man, city manager to sign the cooperation agreement between the City of Lacy and the Nisqually Indian Tribe. And I'd be happy, or anybody else would be happy to answer.
I would move to authorize the city manager to sign the cooperation agreement between the City of Lacy and the Nisqually Indian Tribe.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Well, I'd just like to say, boy, this is a long time coming. I mean, as someone who remembers as a kid going through this area on their motorcycle and, and stomping through the trails, oh yeah. Anyone, I mean, everyone remembers that area as herders, I mean, if you've, were, been around that long, and obviously, you know, to, to see that area now go to its rightful owner with the tribe, you know, I think is pretty amazing, and to see your guys' plans to develop it in support of the tribe and, and this, in our community, I just want to say thank you. I, we, this is a, I think, a really special time in, in our, in our history, and it means a lot that, you know, Chairman, myself, you know, we, you know, basically grew up together here in, in Lacy, and, and we're at this moment in time where just amazing things happening. And so, thank you for your leadership, thank you for the tribal council's leadership, and this cooperation agreement. I mean, the fact that we're here, the fact that we have the accord that we signed in 2014, that I do think, you know, has, has led to this moment of knowing that we're, we're in this together, it means a lot. It's one of my, you know, thing I'm, one most proud of, is the accord that we signed between the tribe and, and the city. So, it's been a long time coming, love your vision, you know, this is, this planning has been there for this area for a very, very long time, and for the tribe to be able to pick this up and see it's, through its vision, it means a lot, so, thank you to the tribe. Is there any other discussion? And all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Next on our City Manager Report, we will have a, a kind of a, just a general informational update on the, the right-of-way initiative and the homeless response, and to provide that update, again, this is one of the opportunities to share the things we've been doing, and how, what we've been doing has, has been a cross-departmental effort, it's not just necessarily one department, it's the whole city organization working together. And so, Ryan Andrews, our long-range planning manager, Sergeant Landrill, are heading our community... And so Ryan Andrews, our long-range planning manager, Sergeant Landworld, head in our community resource unit, and Scott Devlin, our operations manager down at Public Works Shop, will kind of give a joint presentation on our three-pronged approach to our homeless response as well as the right-of-way initiative update. So there you go, Ryan.
Thanks, Rick, for the introduction. Just real briefly, and then I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Landworld to get things going. As Rick mentioned, we have a kind of that three-pronged approach. We have Sergeant Kevin Landworld here with our police department, representing our community resource unit and our mobile outreach team as part of the police department response. We have Scott Devlin here from our Public Works Department to give an update on what the rapid response team has been doing from Public Works. And then finally, I'm going to kind of hit cleanup and talk about kind of housing homelessness related to our efforts at Maple Court. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to get started on the CRU and Mott teams. So Kevin, take it away. Go ahead and hit that button when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, City Council, I'm Kevin Landworld. I'm the Special Operations Sergeant with the Lacey Police Department. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and present on behalf of the Community Resource Unit and our Mobile Outreach Team. The Community Resource Unit, this presentation usually takes about 45 minutes to an hour. I'm going to try to do it in about eight minutes, so bear with me, okay? Consistent myself, Officer David McClurg, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, our police records specialist, Lindsay Palmer, who is in the back hiding back there. And then our most famous member is Trip, who is a two-year-old Burmese mountain dog. If you've seen him, he actually looks like a little horse, a mini horse, but he is a good dog that goes out into the community and helps out in the community. We couldn't be here today without the previous members of the crew unit, which was Sergeant Feechek, Corporal Lams, and Officer Beltran. All those officers were really instrumental in getting us where we are today. So what is the Community Resource Unit? Right now, we are focusing on homeless engagement. I would say about 60% of our time is spent doing homeless engagement. We, I want to make it clear, we do not do sweeps. That is not what the Lacey Police Department is about. We are about providing resources and encouragement and giving the homeless an opportunity to better themselves and better their situation. We are going out into the community, the homeless community every day, walking through the camps, building rapport, building relationship with the homeless. So they learn to trust us and learn that, you know, we may be in uniform, but we're there to help them in any way we can. Besides homelessness, we do community engagement. This includes all of our Coffee with a Cop, our daycare visits, our Cops Cars and Kids, our barbecue festival, the 3rd of July planning, the 3rd of July event, the Lighted Parade, all the community events that the Lacey Police Department is part of, our unit plans, and make sure that we have the resources there so the community feels safe and we can have that engagement with the community. About 10% of our time is actually real law enforcement, I say, when we're actually doing police work. We do that through crime prevention, targeted enforcement in problem areas, and then fugitive apprehension. We'll do shoplift emphasis. We'll partner with our local businesses that are seeing a rise in shoplifts, so Target. We're hoping to partner with Fred Meyer soon. And we've done Home Depot, Burlington Coat Factory, Coastal, all the big box stores. We partner with their asset protection to decrease the amount of crime that's occurring at their businesses. We also do bike theft. We'll put a bike at the corner of an intersection or on the side of a building where there's other thefts or other criminal activity going on. And we'll just sit there and observe it. And if someone were to steal the bike, then we take enforcement action. We also stage generators at construction sites that are being victimized and burglarized to capture the folks that may be victimizing the construction areas in the community. Again, this is a very small part of what the Community Resource Unit does, but it is part of our function. The other part that we do is we partner a lot with our Mobile Outreach Team. Our Mobile Outreach Team are not police officers. They are civilians. They are contracted through Olympic Health and Recovery Services over there off Woodland Square Loop. And they are a community-based outreach team with the ability to respond, provide crisis services in the community. They do not need us to go with them. They can go without us, or we can go with them if they need our help. I would say the majority of the time, they're doing it without law enforcement being on scene. They are a huge asset to our police department. They do things that I never thought that they would do or could do. And they're, they take a lot of work off of the officers, allowing us to do police work. They were created in August of 2021. The chief and the administration recognized the need to have a team like this. There was some legislative changes occurring, as well as the homeless increasing in the community. And they thought that this would be a good resource. And they were right. And it's a good program. It's a great program. And they do fantastic work in our community. So that's Chris, Lucy, Chris, Lucy, Rebecca, Jacob, and John. And they are the rock stars that are the Mobile Outreach Team. So how many people are in the Mobile Outreach Team? You just saw them. There's five. There are two crisis clinicians, two peer specialists, and a designated crisis responder. They're broken up into two teams. Team A works Sunday through Wednesday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And that will be one crisis clinician and one peer specialist. And then Team B works Wednesday through Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And that again will be one crisis clinician and one peer specialist. The designated crisis responder also works Wednesday through Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. These are some of the resources that our Mobile Outreach Team uses. It can't be one group or one entity or one person that's going to help out in this community. It needs to be a lot of resources. And our Mobile Outreach Team knows how to get in contact with them to get the assistance that is needed for whatever situation they're addressing. So what impact has Mott had on the community? They can have a rapid response to folks that are in crisis in the community. They can make a phone call. They can respond without law enforcement. If they need help, they'll request law enforcement to go with them. Increases the efficiency of officers' times. There's a lot of calls that law enforcement get that are not really law enforcement issues. These civilian folks can go out into the community and address these issues, allowing the officers to do police work. They can collaborate and communicate between law enforcement and behavioral health practitioners. So we have a DCR on the team, which is huge. But they also have connections at Southstown Behavioral Hospital over on Woodland Square Loop, as well as St. Pete's Hospital in Olympia. They can decrease the numbers in arrests and jail admissions. If an officer's like, hey, committed a crime, but, you know, jail's not the place for you. Maybe we can get you some mental health resources or other resources. They can call the Mott Team. They can call the DCR out and go that route rather than taking the person to jail. They decrease the voluntary and involuntary psychiatric hospitalations of people. Again, you know, officers go to a call, and they think that the person needs to go to the hospital. They can call the Mott Team out, and Mott Team can come and evaluate it based on their training, based on their expertise. And go, no, they don't need to go to the hospital. They need this. And they can guide the officer to what they need. They can decrease in the repeat calls for service. You know, we get 911 calls over and over again from the same people in the community. They can direct them, hey, don't call 911. Call the crisis line or call the Mott Team. They will do follow-ups, so they will go out and proactively engage with these folks so they are not calling 911 to get law enforcement to respond. Switching to homelessness real quick. Currently, there are 10 established unhoused individuals in Lacey. That number may seem low, based on the number of camps you may see in the city. However, these folks are on Department of Enterprise Service property, which is over near Martin and Desmond, across from the movie theater. We are in constant contact with these folks. Both Community Resource Unit and Mott are out there weekly. Mott goes out there several times a week, offering services. Some of these campers have been out there for eight years on the property. We have been in constant contact with them for four years through our crew unit and our Mott Team coming on in 2021. They've been, some of them have been offered of housing, some of them, or a lot of, all of them have been offered resources. Some of them have been offered housing, and they've declined. We have a win as of last week. One of the campers got a key to an apartment and is going to be moving off of the property and into permanent housing. And that was thanks to the work of the crew unit, our Mott Team, and other resources in the community. The other homeless you may see in the community, the tents on the side of the road or in a park or what, whatever you may have, we call, we consider those transient campers. We still go out. We still provide the resources. We still look for a better outcome. We still provide them Mott. But if they do not engage in resources, they do not want help, they refuse to follow up on the resources, then the crew unit will take a law enforcement approach if crimes are being committed. Again, that is the last option. We do not want to arrest folks. But if resources are not being followed up by the homeless, then we may have to do that. So through our outreach, we try to build rapport. We try to build relationships with the campers. We offer them wraparound services. We offer them state, local, county resources as well. We try to find them employment or housing. And you can see at the bottom, in February of 2022, the Department of Ecology provided money that was used to get a camper into permanent housing. That person got permanent housing. We assisted him with getting a job at a fast food restaurant where he became a manager. That was a huge win for our unit to get him off the street, get him a job, and have him be successful. That was over a year ago. So that was a huge win for us. Another thing, by building rapport, by building trust with the homeless, is we can develop informants. You know, there's a, unfortunately, there can be some criminal behavior in the homeless community. And developing informants is huge for us to combat that criminal behavior. We've even arrested folks for, that were wanted by, wanted for homicide by other agencies in the homeless community in Lacey by using informants. We have the Social Services Fund. This was created back in 2021. It's a fund that the crew unit has access to, thanks to the city manager and some other folks that created this. It provides us with funds to provide people with housing, with bus and train tickets. We bought in gas. We bought in food. We bought in water. We bought in clothing, batteries, all kinds of things that are bettering the homeless in our community. So that was a huge help to us to have the Social Services Fund.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can you go back one step? Where does that money come from?
It comes from our budget. We budget it, yeah. And these are the Lacey Municipal Codes that we use. Unlawful camping, storage of personal property in public places, and restricted parking for recreational vehicles. When I say we use these, I think I can count on less than two hands how many times I've used it since I've been part of the Community Resource Unit, which is almost 15, 16 months. We do not use these LMCS unless it's a last resort. Again, we're trying to get resources, trying to provide opportunity, trying to better those who are in a homeless situation so they can get off the streets and get housing. We're not, these are not tools that we're using on a daily basis to make arrests and to involve people in the criminal world. Because being homeless is not a crime, and they need help. So these are just some resources that we have on the criminal side that we can use if needed. And then, last but not least, we work closely with our rapid response team. They are a huge asset to us. And I'll let Scott talk about that.
Thank you, Council. My name's Scott Devlin. I'm Public Works Operations Manager. Nice to see you again. Here to talk about the Rapid Response Team. Now, a Rapid Response Team was created in the fall of 2021. September is when they were hired on. And their real job is to make Lacey a safe and clean, attractive environment. As we see you drive around the city streets, they're all clean. They look nice. And we wanted to keep our city looking that way. We also want to help our community be a very safe, attractive place to be for our citizens. And I think as a whole, you know, as we just heard, our homeless population do need help. And this is just part of that. So we would sometimes go into camps and clean things up even when they're around. And that's a huge benefit for our community. We have two people currently on our Rapid Response Team. Originally, the two people that were hired were Rachel Zelinski and Brett Sanders. They were on that team for about a year or so. And then they both got promoted to different positions because they are absolutely hard workers, really great people. And they definitely deserve that opportunity. Currently, our two Rapid Response Team members are Aiden Zal and Kevin Smith. I do not believe they have pictures of them here, or they were not here tonight, but they need some kudos for sure. So like I mentioned, there's two Public Works employees that are a part of the Rapid Response Team who focus on cleaning up trash, shopping carts, graffiti removal, any other kind of tasks around the city that they are called upon. Their real job is to be what is called a Rapid Response Team. That means that at any moment, the Lacey PD might call them and say, we need you over on this site to come help clean up this garbage that was dumped or this homeless camp that's been abandoned. And so, we give them tasks during their job that they can leave at a moment's notice. And so, that's been a huge benefit. I've been told that they are extremely responsive, and they are extremely happy to do this service. So they get in some really gross stuff sometimes, but that being said, it's a huge benefit. I wanted to share with you some of the Rapid Response totals that we have throughout the community. The first one I want to share with you is the homeless-related labor hours. And so, that's 3,960 hours over the last two years, actually a little bit less than two years now. They have cleaned up 154 camps. They have general cleanup, roadside cleanups has been about 400. And we get everything dumped from couches to mattresses to a bunch of tents to, I mean, you could imagine like what could be dumped on the side of the road just from homeless moving in and out of the community. They've collected 1,938 carts. And then they have, we put together a program because initially what we did is we were recycling these shopping carts, taking the metal recyclers and getting rid of them. But they're pretty expensive. We wanted to help the community out even more. So we put together a program where they would disinfect them and return them to the stores. In original condition, off the street, the stores did not want to take those. But they did agree that if we were to clean them and sanitize them, they would take them back. And so, we have returned 2,004 carts back to the stores, which is huge. And the reason that numbers differentiate there is because we have other staff around the city that do drive around. When they see a cart, they will grab it. And so, that original number is just what the Rapid Response Team has picked up. They do that patrol once a week. They will patrol the city, certain sectors of the city. And then we also get reports back from staff driving around like, hey, over here, there's a bunch of carts. Can you come grab them, please? They have only recycled 150 since the program started. Picked up 871 needles, cleaned 80 sites of graffiti, and 51 tons of trash that we've hauled off to the dump. It does not include what goes in the dumpster because we can't weigh that. I'm going to share a little bit about the hours that they have provided the city since the start. 1,598 hours of cart removal, 1,920 hours of homeless camp cleanup, 188 hours of litter removal, and 196 hours of vandalism and graffiti removal. You can see right there in the middle, I skipped over the admin. There's just a huge support here, 700 hours of admin staff that we've actually tracked. I'm going to share with you guys some pictures of some of the great work that they do. As you can see, these are the camps that they walk into that they have to clean up. This is on to the next one here. You can see the before and after. I believe this is off Third Avenue. Let's see, Slater County, I-5. This is a homeless camp right here on the left-hand side. You can see the shelter, metal roof. They're actually, we found that because there was a fire. They were chopping down some trees. They were actually going to fall on a building, and then there was a fire that had started. So we ran out there to put the fire out. When we went to put the fire out, we found this camp. Reported this to Lacey PD. They came out, talked to the individuals, and then they ended up moving along. So we were able to clean that up. I-5 tunnels on the right-hand side there, as you can see, there's all the garbage. It gets a lot worse when it rains out. They look for a place to stay that's dry. Some other stuff you can see on the left-hand side here, just garbage dumped. And on the right-hand side, all the shopping carts. And what you kind of involve, you think it's just a shopping cart, but normally it's full of stuff. More shopping carts. And you're right, you can see how we disinfect them, stack them all for a trailer load to bring it back to the store. So we'll get a whole bunch ready and haul them all back at the same time. I say we, but it's not we. It's them. They do a great job, the Rapid Response Team. All right, graffiti removal. It's all over the place. You probably don't see it so much because these guys are on top of it. They might be there just for a few hours in the morning or half a day, and they go clean it up. And I think that's the last slide. And I will turn this back over to Ryan. There we go.
Thanks, Scott. So you've heard a lot about kind of our immediate responses.
So you've heard a lot about kind of our immediate responses, and my part of my presentation is to touch a little bit more on the long-term responses to homelessness and a recent success that we have in Maple Court. So as I think all the council is aware, the Low Income Housing Institute purchased the former Days Inn out in Hawks Prairie and took ownership back in January of 2023. The former hotel was remodeled and then opened its doors at a ribbon cutting that you were all at, most of you were at back in July. The purpose for Maple Court is providing shelter and safety for the unhoused, specifically those that were housed or those that lived along our right-of-way corridors, along Interstate 5 at Slater Kenny and Hobby Lobby. So the funding for this program came through the state of Washington to implement the right-of-way initiative, to get people off of the state right-of-way and into housing. The long-term plans for this facility is to transition it to permanent supportive housing. So right now, it is operated as a shelter, but long-term, it will be a permanent supportive housing. Couple pictures there on the screen for you. On your left shows the current situation at Slater Kenny. As of about three weeks ago, the last individual was taken from Slater Kenny and housed at Maple Court. Those that were on the list to be housed have been now, they are now housed at Maple Court. Those that were not on that list and were there illegally have been removed from the site. You can see the picture of Maple Court there on the right-hand side. It's got a paint job, a recent paint job. It's no longer red. From the former Days Inn, or if you've been here a long time, you remember, it was initially constructed as the King Hoster Hotel once upon a time. So currently, Maple Court has 115 residents as of about a week ago. Maple Court does provide services to the folks there, including two meals daily. It's a cold breakfast and then a hot dinner. Those are prepared in kitchens on the facility itself. They have laundry service for use by residents. And then they also have three case managers onsite that provide assistance to the 115 residents. That assistance includes finding people permanent housing, working on obtaining employment, healthcare, and other services. Right now, immediately out of the gate, the focus for these case managers is on obtaining identification and birth certificates. But once the residents are able to get those materials, then it's easier for them to get those services that they need. So that's really the focus of that right now. All the residents are required to also abide by a code of conduct onsite, so that addresses things like drug and alcohol use, behavior, parking, anything that has to do with the facility itself is contained in that code of conduct. I'm going to provide a little bit of information here about the police calls to the facility. So a little bit of background here before I share these slides, and certainly we have the police representatives here that can answer these questions. It just fit more into the presentation, better to talk about it here. First of all, we have essentially calls for service. Those can be either citizen or officer initiated, and so those are essentially when those calls are dispatched and an officer responds. We also keep track of statistics in terms of cases, and that's when a call for service actually results in a written report. So that's the difference between a call for service and a case. Want to touch a little bit on our calls for service. As you might remember, when this was the former Days Inn, we did receive a number of calls for service to this area. It was a fairly, it was kind of a frequent flyer from a police perspective. You can see, going through to the end of December 2022, the calls were relatively high. They dropped immediately upon ownership of the facility by the Low Income Housing Institute. And then until about July, when it was reoccupied, and now you can see the numbers in August of 2023 are starting to trend upward a little bit. It's certainly something that we are monitoring and are aware of, and have made the Low Income Housing Institute staff aware of as well. So there's a new onsite manager, Katie, who was originally the manager there, is no longer there. We do have a new management, and they're aware of that. They're also, in response, also re-establishing their community advisory group, which is a group of local residents and concerned citizens that advise the management on issues associated with the facility. Councilmember Vasquez.
This might be your next slide, but if not, do you have numbers of reports?
About that?
Oh, there you go.
So case numbers have not increased as much. So since July, we've had one, oh, nope, that's two, two cases that have been written since the facility's been operated. So while the calls for service is high at this point, the cases are fairly low. That's something, again, that we'll keep tabs on. Our understanding is that there's been four people that have been dismissed from the site. I believe one had stolen a vehicle that was parked in the parking lot, and they were previously, they were made the hotel home, and they were allowed to continue to live there. So they were not brought in from Slater Kenny. This was people that had already been living there. One provided a false identification and was actually a sex offender and was removed, and two, left voluntarily. So next up's on Maple Court. Obviously, we want to keep track of the data, not only the police calls, but also things like, you know, how successful have people been in exiting the facility and obtaining housing? How many have exited the facility and are back living on the streets? And the way that we can do that is through what's called HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System. And so that's getting up and running now, so we can keep track of how things are going at the site. Also, something to be aware of is that the State Department of Commerce has recently provided a notice of funding availability for additional right-of-way funding coming up for this fiscal year, which runs through essentially June of 2024. We do have $4 million of extra money to be able to use for right-of-way initiative in Thurston County. So we'll be working through the Regional Housing Council to establish potentially a path forward on the way to be able to use that money. So also important to note, though, that we actually don't have any money in 2025. So it does look like the money will run out eventually for being able to address the right-of-way initiatives through the state unless the legislature does take action to extend the programs. So with that, provide a lot of information. We're all three here standing by. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think one of my questions is for more than one of you, but, you know, you spoke at the beginning about, we have 10 known residents of the camp over by the Ecology Building. I know that we have a coordinated entry program that identifies folks and tries to find shelter for them, and that's how we put folks into the Maple Court Building. I don't think Maple Court is at capacity yet, so do any of those folks that are at the Ecology Camp have an option of moving into Maple Court?
Maybe I can just take this one. So the right-of-way initiative is the primary part of the residents associated with Maple Court. So the next round of residents, if you will, are actually coming from the Wheeler Encampment in Olympia. So that's the priority, is to get the people off the right-of-way. The good news about the future $4 million is that it covers the right-of-way as well as other state properties. So we do have the opportunity to be able to potentially use that $4 million for things in addition to the right-of-way, like state properties, like what's in front of Ecology.
I can tell you that Grant Beck has been very good about advocating for the city and for that particular property. So he's constantly at these meetings as well as Ryan is, and constantly talks to the county and to Department of Ecology and Department of Commerce about this as a possible opportunity.
Yeah, because one of the things that I've heard about the folks living in some of the camps is that they may be reluctant to accept shelter if it's not permanent shelter, if it's temporary, because they feel like they might be displaced and then not be able to return once the temporary shelter goes away. So if we have more permanent options, that may be more attractive in getting folks that have been otherwise reluctant to go into shelter.
And part of the right-of-way initiative and setting up the parameters with the MOU, with the state and Department of Commerce, is the right-of-way initiative funding is first priority, is those individuals in the state right-of-way. Then second priority is local through coordinated entry, and third is being able to be a resource for our CRU to defer folks. So there is a tier that needs to occur outside of the $4 million that just, Ryan just mentioned, coming out this current notice of funding availability. And then again, as Chief Almata said, as we work through the right-of-way coordination groups and there's, you know, other needs, we're making sure that it is the first part is right-of-way, and then if it's going beyond the right-of-way, that they're looking at other state agency properties first to try to address those various encampments.
Yep, Lenny?
So one of the big selling points for Maple Court was the fact that we were under the impression that it would reduce call volume for the police dramatically, because Days Inn had had, you know, very high volume. Looking at those numbers, that doesn't seem to be the case at this point with, you know, 34 in August. Can we get some more information on what those calls are, what kind of things are going on, whether it be today or at, you know, some near-future meeting? But I'd like to know more about what's going on there, because it doesn't, it seems like we might not be getting some of the success that we expected there.
Well, I can actually speak to that, if that's all right.
Yeah, I have a theory too. Go ahead.
So the nature of the calls is dramatically different, whereas the call volume you saw earlier was much more high-urgency calls, very law enforcement, resource-intensive, a lot of drug dealing, a lot of prostitution, violent crimes, a lot of stolen, a lot of theft, a lot of found, stolen property, stolen vehicles. That was the nature of the crime before. Most of the calls we're getting now are check the status, really kind of more quality-of-life type issues, really less resource-intensive. A lot of times, officers are the first responders, and then we bring on other resources. And that's kind of reflected in the fact that we've only had two criminal cases documented at that location since, whereas before, we had many, many more criminal cases. In fact, it was the largest generator of radio calls in our jurisdiction at one point. So actually, we're very pleased with where this is trending.
If I can just add on to that, too.
Thank you, Keith. That really clears it up for me quite a bit. I appreciate that.
And also, as Chief mentioned, it's the type of calls, but also we got to remember, too, that we're doing a large effort with a large amount of people that have been living in the outdoors into a new environment. And so there's going to be a little bit of that, I guess, disruption, the best way to call it. And I look at one month being really not a trend, but as we, as Ryan mentioned, we're going to continue to monitor, and the chief's team will continue to monitor type of calls and making sure we're in good communication with Lehigh and the county partners to make sure that that evens out and becomes more stable.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just say, I've been out there with the team a few times. I think you guys do a great, great job, very patient, very compassionate. You're changing lives out there. I'd say, when it comes to a multifaceted issue or problem, or however you want to describe homelessness in general, it takes a response that's also multifaceted. You know, the mobile outreach team, the police department, Public Works. So, you know, I think it works. And though the numbers are, you know, you can always play games with statistics and numbers, right? It shows that they're different numbers, they're good numbers, and it's having a positive effect, and it's changing people's lives. And I know it's changing your lives, too. So, good job.
Yeah, and I just, I do like to say that other jurisdictions and other elected officials are starting to take notice of Lacey. It's been interesting, I've received a couple phone calls recently saying, "What are you guys doing in Lacey? Because you seem like you guys are having a better effect when it comes to this issue than maybe some other jurisdictions." And I really talk about this three-pronged approach that we have in Lacey, and the necessary of our Community Resource Unit, mobile outreach team, and our Rapid Response Team. I mean, as Councilmember just said, this is a complex issue, and the traditional way that we've dealt with this has not worked right. You can tell, it doesn't work if you just put a law enforcement-only tactic to this issue. What you really need to do is look at what resources are available and get it out into your community. And Lacey, we're doing it. You're doing an amazing job, and it's making a difference, and, you know, other people are starting to pay attention. And I hope other jurisdictions can actually take the same approach, because it should be all of ours, you know, wish is to get people out of homelessness into permanent housing. And that's what we're, that's our focus here in Lacey, and it's working.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Ryan and Scott and Sergeant Landwell for that. And also want to just, again, acknowledge Lindsay in the back, because, again, she does a lot of work to provide support and data and information and keep sure we're on track. And, you know, also, just as a follow-up with this approach, you know, with the CRU program, the MLT, and the Rapid Response Team, I do want to recognize, too, former city manager Scott Spence for developing this, you know, strategy about four years ago with the support and working with the council, and also leadership of Chief Almata and Deputy Chief, and Grant Beck, and the rest of the teams that are working on this. So just want to acknowledge that, and it's having an effect. All right, next, continuing this ear to partnerships, turn it over to our Parks Director, Jen Burbage, Parks Culture and Recreation Director, to talk about another partnership with inter-local agreement to establish a kiosk at the Regional Athletic Complex.
Thank you, City Manager. A good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. So tonight, I'm looking for recommendation, or, excuse me, action to approve the recommended inter-local agreement between the City of Lacey and Thurston County for a new kiosk at the RAC. The council is aware of the project. It has been on the Lacy's Historical Commission work plan in 2022, and then also this year in 2023. So you've seen it earlier this year at the joint work session, but as a reminder of the project, and also for the benefit of the public, I wanted to give a little bit of background. So the City of Lacey Historical Commission has been working with the Thurston County Historical Commission for an informational kiosk to be placed at the Regional Athletic Complex. The goal is to get historic information in a high-traffic location and kind of cross-promote educational information and be able to have something for visitors at the RAC to read and learn about the history of the local area. As you know, we have a lot of local visitors to the RAC, but we also have regional and international visitors. So it'll be a really great opportunity to get some information out there. The kiosk is anticipated to have six display panels, and there's, some of the ideas are in your packet. The commissions are working on them right now, and the six that are proposed to start out with will be determined based on availability of photos and some of the research that needs to go into it. So we're still determining, the commissions are still determining those panels. The nice thing is that the panels can be changed out over time, and so the information can be changed periodically. So the inter-local agreement was approved and recommended by the city's Historical Commission and the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. Since it's in a park, it's a park enhancement, so they did move that forward. And the agreement was actually approved by the Board of County Commissioners at their September 12th meeting, so just this past week. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can I give a motion, please?
I would move to approve the recommended inter-local agreement between the City of Lacey and Thurston County for a new kiosk at the RAC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm excited. We've been waiting for this for a while, we've been talking about it for a while, and so it's great to see this, and I can't wait to see it, once it's there. Of course, I'm a big history, but, local history buff, so I'm really looking forward to it. Any other discussion? Then all in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And the last item we have on tonight is another great partnership and opportunity. It's a request for the City Council to authorize the purchase of property from St. Martin's Abbey. Again, St. Martin's Abbey is a longstanding community partner and neighbor to the City of Lacey. And of course, you know, St. Martin's has been here for, well, well over 100 years as part of this community. So tonight, again, we're looking at moving forward with the development and construction of our new police station. The next step is to acquire the property. Once this is done, then we'll be able to move forward with closing on that property and as well as the construction projects. I want to turn it over to Dave Schneider to talk about the purchase-sale agreement and answer any questions the council may have. Oh, and I do want to acknowledge Brother Nicholas and Andrew Moyer representing St. Martin's Abbey out in the audience tonight.
Thanks, Rick. Councilmembers? Yes, so this is certainly an exciting action item that we're presenting to the council. Have a couple slides just to refresh council's recollection and the community's recollection of what we're looking at. It was in 2022, winter of 2022, when the City Council entered into a memorandum of understanding with St. Martin's Abbey with the idea of purchasing up to 11 acres of property for the development of the future Lacey Police Station. That agreement contained specific points, some of which I'm going to briefly outline. We had the property appraised, and the appraisal price, which the parties agreed to, was a little over $4 million. That amount was subject That amount was subject to change depending upon how much of the eleven acres the city was actually going to need. The agreement indicated that the sale was going to be contingent on the city's completion of the design and determination of the property's feasibility for that Lacey Police Station. That has been done, the city has determined that the property is suitable. The MOU required that the sale was going to require that the city continuously use the property for the specific purpose of a police and training facility. The agreement contained specific site developments, and the agreement reserved an easement to the Abbey for location of a sign, and it reserved an easement to the city for ingress and egress over Abbey Way to access the site. So, quickly looking at the slides, here's an overview of the property that we're talking about, outlined in green. That's just north of existing City Hall. The second slide shows, outlined in red, the current City of Lacey property that's owned at City Hall and the library sit upon. This next slide shows the property that we are talking about acquiring. Now, this, outlined in red here and shaded, totals 8.89 acres. So, it did result that the city requires less than that original eleven acres. The resulting proposed price, then, that's agreed between the parties is a touch over $3 million. The final slide here shows the two easements that would be reserved. One, in the very north end, very small section, is the bordering I-5, the north end of the property, would be reserved for a sign for use by the Abbey. And then, at the bottom, you can see, there's actually two easements there. One, running west to east, is a long Abbey Way, which would provide the city access to the site. And then, that north-south portion, which would be the back access usable to the site for police vehicles, that easement area would be granted to the Abbey for them to use that portion of property to access their property that would be lying east of that. So, the city and Abbey have entered into a purchase-and-sale agreement. The agreement's been signed by all the parties. It is contingent upon approval by this City Council of the acquisition. So, the request tonight is that council pass, or move to approve the acquisition of the property from St. Martin's Abbey and authorize the city manager to sign all documents necessary to finalize the acquisition.
Can I give a motion, please?
I would move that we approve the acquisition of property from St. Martin's Abbey and authorize the city manager to sign all documents necessary to finalize the acquisition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
It's pleasant to see that at least one component of this project is slightly less than we budgeted for because of some of the impacts on other parts of the project due to inflation. So, that's lovely.
Yeah, I just wanted to really thank St. Martin's Abbey and St. Martin's University. Obviously, we wouldn't be sitting here today if it wasn't for St. Martin's Abbey. You know, long ago, when there was a recognize, we outgrew our old City Hall, we realized we needed a place for a City Hall here in Lacey. For those who don't remember, which is probably most people, is the original City Hall, it used to be on Pacific Avenue, next to what was the Lacey Fire District at the time, now it's John Paul High School. That building was our City Hall and our police station all in one, and we actually moved that building, when we moved over here, over to a piece of property, and that's our current museum. And so, that building's been very well-used, and of course, now we're looking to build our new museum and cultural center. But after there, we moved into this building through, through an agreement to be able to purchase the property through the Abbey. And so, we've had a long, long relationship with the Abbey. And I just want to make sure, generally members, another thing on the kiosk needs to be St. Martin's, obviously, for, when we were looking at the RAC, because obviously, their history here goes, goes way back. But, you know, number one, I also, I was really pleased to see the space for signage, for I-5 signage. I thought for a long time we should have signage on I-5 for St. Martin's, and we haven't had that. And so, we're, I'm really happy to see that you'll have some signage on there. And so, I think this goes through just another amazing, you know, relationship that the city has. We wouldn't be here without, you know, St. Martin's Abbey. They're instrumental in us becoming a community, becoming a city, and having our City Hall, the work that we've done with them, with our makerspace is just amazing, that work that we're continuing to do right now with, you know, the roundabout, with, you know, a pedestrian corridor that goes onto midtown. I mean, there's, the relationship we have with Abbey and this university is special, and I just want to thank you for everything you do for our community.
I spoke earlier about being on the tour with the homeless shelters, and St. Martin's was there, you know? And the issues may, you know, change or evolve or be different, but the response and the solution, or making the situation better, is all dependent on relationships. The tribe and the St. Martin's School District, JBLM, you name it, the answers are there, or at least an easier path that's better for everybody is there, a lot more accessible when you have those relationships that mean something, and people are all there for the right reason. So, we should probably put the Nisqually Tribe on that kiosk, too.
Yeah, they were listed, I think. Yeah. Okay, is there any, any other discussion? I think our gratitude is duly noted. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then, that motion carries. Okay, are you done with your report?
I think so, but I just do want to, again, reiterate and thank you to Brother Nicholas and Andrew and all their work in bringing this agreement forward, as well as Dave and John and Ashley in the back, that, all the work they've done to put this together for tonight. So, I just want to acknowledge all their work.
Okay, now, on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first with, start off with the mayor's forum. The mayor's forum was actually held right here in City Hall. We actually ended up holding it a week later because there was a lot of conflict that happened, but we met here in this chamber last Friday, and we were able to serve the Pints Doghouse for lunch, which was really cool to be able to show off a new restaurant. And there, all the mayors were pretty excited about trying out all the hot dogs they have available. A couple of things that we talked about. Obviously, one big thing that's coming up in our area is BuCota changing to BuCota for October and all of the things that they're doing out in BuCota. It's really amazing to see that idea of it going to BuCota and their haunted house and all the things that happen there. You know, a small little town taking on all this and really getting some state and, you know, attraction for it. You know, they've been, they've been featured in a couple of different things, and so it's pretty exciting. So, in October, go out to BuCota, and there's things going on every weekend. The other thing that I just, I found a little bit interesting, I was talking to, you know, the mayor of Olympia, was that Olympia is, sounds like they're proposing an idea that anyone with a rental, who has a rental house, would have to get a business license, and then along with that business license, they would be required to do several different things. And it was something that we talked about. I don't know what, if Olympia's going to go forward with that idea, but we sort of talked through as a group of, at least the mayors there, definitely saw some, some problems with, with that approach and trying to, at one time, have more affordable housing, but then also put a bunch of requirements on, you know, a lot of people who may just have a single rental that now can no longer really afford to keep up with all the requirements and then have to turn it over to a rental agency, that would cause the rents to go up. So, I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but it was something that was brought forward to all the mayors. The next thing I want to report on is the Transportation Policy Board. The Transportation Policy Board met, it was the second Wednesday of this month, and the main thing I want to talk about that was discussed at the Transportation Policy Board was the work that's been done on our regional trails plans. And I know this has gone up to TRPC as well, where they identified the five regional goals for our trail network, which is having a connected and accessible network, a user-friendly network, a safe and secure experience, have a, it'd be a collaborative effort and a well-maintained work, network. I think one of our trail system within Thurston County is one of the things that is, really makes this area special. You know, we've, all the work that's been happening through our trails over the years, the work that's been, you know, the Rails to Trails, the Karen Fraser Trail, there's all this work and this interconnectivity. A lot of money has been spent in to create our trail network. The one things that I think is pretty glaring, after looking at this regional trail plan, was that there's really no money set aside to maintain and enhance our trails. And so, there's, this is a really good recommendation, looking at our regional trail plan. They have really good recommendations, like establishing a regional trail planning work group, convening an annual regional trail meeting, and then, of course, updating the plan. But I actually, I made a motion at the Transportation Policy Board to direct staff to bring back our recommendation that will be forwarded on to the full council. For years, the, one of the things that the Transportation Policy Board focuses on is federal dollars that come to our region and goes out to projects throughout, throughout our community. And for many years, we took a set aside, we set aside a little bit of that money to focus on a major project, and that was, of course, bridging the gap of a major trail, which was the, over, over by Pacific Avenue and Martin Way. There was no way to get really across, across that major trail, and we set aside some dollars every year to make sure that happened. Once that was completed, and I think 2012 or something like that, we haven't done that, and we've sort of been looking at what is another, maybe, regional asset that we can focus on. And my recommendation was to set aside some dollars to maintain and enhance our trail network within Thurston County and set aside a little bit of those federal dollars that come our way to do that. That I was, you know, I just sort of threw it out there. The Transportation Policy Board discussed it, and it was unanimously approved to direct staff to come up, you know, come up with a plan. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing how that's going to all play out because there, it's a great trail network, but there's lots of missing pieces. There's areas, you know, if you've, if you've been out in the trail network recently, there's a lot of routes that are coming over, and it's just, one way you can discourage people real quick is if you crash on your bike because there's routes going over, you know, in your trail. And so, it's a very well-used system, it just needs to be maintained, but like everything else, you have to figure out dollars to do it. And so, I hope we can come up with a, a good recommendation that will go forward to the full council for their consideration. So, that is my report. Councilmember Cox?
Okay, I'm going to be reporting on the September 13th meeting of the LOT Clean Water Alliance. The work session part of our meeting consisted of a tour of the digester system improvements that's Phase Two. We approved a procurement process because this is a three-year project that's going to get very involved, and at some point, it will mean closing part of Franklin Street in downtown Olympia for construction. We also approved an award of $337,807.50 for reclaimed water piping replacement. These are 12-to-18-inch pipes and valves that have been operational since 2006. Unfortunately, chlorine has caused a significant amount of corrosion, which means replacement is needed. Most of the rest of it was pretty boilerplate kinds of stuff. We had a quick overview of the next strategic planning window. We talked about succession planning. We talked about energy savings assessment that's upcoming by Cascade Energy, looking at pumping efficiency, internal recycle pumps, et cetera. And then, two more awards for LOT. They got 2023 Program of the Year Award for Excellence for Water Reuse and Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association 2023 Municipal Water Protection Award. So, LOT continues to do good things. That's my.
Thank you. Ken Smarver-Greenstein?
Thank you. I have one report tonight on Emergency Medical Services Medic One, which met yesterday. A couple of things. One, they just completed the study for the 2022 response times. So, the state of Washington sets minimum requirements, or maximum requirements, I guess, really, for response time for Medic One. That would be for ALS, Advanced Life Support Paramedic Calls. And it's required that we meet at least 80% compliance with these standards. And the standards are 10 minutes for urban, 20 minutes for suburban, and 45 minutes for rural areas. I'm happy to say that Medic One's system is over 90% in compliance in all three of these areas. And in fact, we actually set somewhat higher standards because instead of 45 minutes for rural, we use 30 minutes as our, as our guide, and we still have been over 90% successful. The average response time for ALS calls in Thurston County is seven minutes and 18 seconds. And that includes the rural, the entire, that's the average for the entire system, including the rural area. So, we've been very successful in taking good care of the people of Thurston County on ALS front. We also had a very robust discussion about Narcan. The discussion really centered on the use of Narcan by EMS personnel, not paramedics, but the, those who are in the regular BLS ambulance and firefighters who are EMTs typically. The discussion came up because, as everyone's seen, I'm sure, there have been a lot of Department of Health initiatives and so forth to try to get people, more of the public, police agencies, to use Narcan on a more regular basis and have easy access to Narcan. And EMS Medic One completely supports those initiatives and believes strongly that police and the public should be using Narcan. The reason that it's not in the medical protocol for EMS, for EMTs to have it, is because it is better in the long-term, long-term outcomes. It is actually far better to oxygenate patients than it is to just give them Narcan. So, our, the strategy is, and this comes from our medical program director, is our EMTs, who all have oxygen, and all of our, all the vehicles have oxygen, instead of giving Narcan, give oxygen. They're able to give oxygen at 100% oxygen, whereas the air only has about 21% oxygen. So, when you give someone Narcan, they wake up, it takes them, puts them immediately into withdrawal, and they're able to get oxygen again, but they're only getting it at 21%. This enables them to get 100% oxygen and gives time for when the paramedics arrive to then give Narcan in mediated doses. So, the typical nasal spray is instantly four milligrams. They're able to titrate it to give the right amount to bring that person out of their, out of their situation more, more fluidly, instead of it being a sudden impact. The problem is, when you give someone Narcan, most of them wind up walking away instead of going then to the hospital. When paramedics do it and titrate it, they're able to then bring people to the hospital to have the discussions, to try to talk to them about, you know, things that they could be doing to maybe help people get off of and out of that drug addiction cycle that they're in. So, we had a very long discussion about that and happy to answer any questions about it, if anyone has any, but just kind of wanted to touch on that. And then, the last thing I wanted to touch- And then the last thing I wanted to touch on is, we also had a presentation at, a subcommittee of EMS Medic One that I sit on for some future planning. We had a, a presentation from Multicare regarding the new emergency room, the standalone emergency room that's being built here in Lacey, and some interesting stats on it. It will be a 10-bed facility with all of the services that you would typically expect in an emergency room. They'll be able to do blood, imaging, all of the things they do in emergency rooms. Their goal, though, is far different than when you have an emergency room in a hospital. Their goal is to have all patients that walk through the door seen by a doctor within 15 minutes, and hopefully in and out of the facility with all results of everything and testing done in under two hours. That's about half of what they get typically in their actual emergency rooms. And Multicare does have four other of these standalone emergency rooms, and that, and they are meeting those numbers. They are getting people seen by a doctor in 15 minutes and out the door in two hours. So the hope is that this will be a really big benefit and relieve some of the stress at both Providence and Capitol. And that is my report. Oh, by the way, they plan to open for their first patient on December 13th.
Wow. Yeah. Well, thank you for that, for letting me know about the firefighters, EMTs, on why they don't administer Narcan. I, I heard that, and I was like, that doesn't, that doesn't sound right. I mean, everyone else is administering it, why went to EMTs? And I had never heard an explanation of why until tonight, so it didn't make any sense to me.
And that's why I wanted to mention it tonight, because it has become somewhat of a controversial point, you know? And, you know, you, you get stuck sometimes between public, in public opinion on what we should be, people should be doing, and, you know, the political ramifications, right? Because of the situation. But these decisions are made by medical professionals, and our MPD, the medical program director, actually put this in place in 2018. And it has been reviewed by boards of doctors several times since, since then, and every time it's been upheld as that is the best course of treatment medically, to get people the oxygen they need, and then administer Narcan. And that few minutes between when the EMT gets there and when the paramedics arrive, it's, it's better to oxygenate them than it is to give them Narcan. Now, again, fully support EMS does and the, and the MPD does for police and the public to administer Narcan, because they clearly don't have the technical skills or the equipment to be able to give them oxygen at 100%.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Let's see, Councilor Stebbin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thurston County Law and Justice met this afternoon at 4:00, and the, the updated crime trends came out, and it's probably not by any real surprise, but with COVID, you had a downtick and everything, and so you're starting to get trends of slightly ticking back up, but it's still substantially lower than where it was pre-COVID and trending years prior to that. But these, all these numbers are, you know, comparing apples and oranges, because you really have to compare the, the numbers between your populace and your cities compared to the other cities around. I will say that one of the numbers came out with Kitsap, and I think it was a crime rate between our two cities, because we're pretty close in population, and they were 10 points higher per thousand resident, per, per thousand residents, 10, 10 things higher. So, I mean, I don't think I'm communicating this very well. So incidents per 1,000 resident, they're at, we're at 51, and they're at 59, so difference of eight, which is substantial, in my opinion, because, you know, like in-kind city. I will say that other things that I took away were juvenile arrests were down from 289 to 136, and superior court filings were down from 1,300 to less than 1,000, which is good. And I always like to compare with our constituents, right, our, our neighbors in, in our community. So we were at 60 for violent crimes per 1,000. Olympia was 87 and a half, Tomwater 60, almost 67, and Yelm was 59. But all the trends, I mean, again, it's hard to compare with raw numbers like this when they're, you, you heard me speak on it before, you could take statistics or analytics and you can twist it, and, and for good or bad, or whatever you want to meet your agenda or vision or whatever. So, but taking it away, it's still, I got that we're still down, and it's, and even though things are getting back to normal, the, the trends are lower, which is good. So I don't know if Chief wants to add anything, but.
The only thing I would add that it's, data taken in isolation without context is not very helpful. It really, data within the context so you can understand what's actually going on, much like we, we talked about earlier, the number of calls at a particular location, it's really the type of call, and what is the, was really the demand on police resources. And that's really the importance of this, and I'll be happy to bring those stats back to council and provide the proper context. But I can tell you, the crime rate, which is the number of crimes per person, per thousand of the population, if you will, for Lacey is significantly lower than other jurisdictions within Thurston County, something we're very pleased about. I'll be happy to present that data at a later time.
Exactly what I was trying to communicate. Yeah, I, I would, I would like to have a, a report out on that. I think it's, I think it's important that, that we, that our, that our city understands the data, and, because we get, you know, asked about this all the time, because there's this perception that it's gone way up, right? And I hear, I hear it all the time, and it's like, what are you doing with this crazy crime rate going through the roof? And so there's a perception it's gone up, and, but you look at data and it shows you something else. But, I mean, I know, as you just said, we have to put everything into context, so I think it'd be appropriate and beneficial for our community to take a look at these numbers.
Just speaking conceptually, conceptually, property crime is the majority of the crime in Lacey. Violent crime is a sub, very minor part of our overall crime. Overall, crime hasn't increased, but our crime rate, our crime rate, which is the number per thousand members of our population, is still very low. So, again, I'll be happy to present this information, but just conceptually, it has ticked up, but not as dramatically as some might think.
So I'll coordinate a, a informational update at a future council meeting.
Sounds great.
And that's the end of me and Chief's report.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If, if possible, Rick, when you coordinate that, I think it'd be helpful to do it at a regular council meeting. We, we obviously have gotten those stats and, and heard from the chief in committee and even at work session. I think it'd be really nice to do that at one of these meetings, so that the public hears more of it as well.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Greenstein, and, and for bringing that up. As you saw tonight in the city manager report, we had the update on the homeless response, and that is, I neglected to say that, I wanted to continue to provide some of these informational updates from various activities from the various departments in the organization, and this being one of them, at our regular council meetings, I think is an opportunity, as you said, to get it out to the community and also get the council more aware to be able to share that information out in the community as well in their, in their travels.
Thank you about that. Okay. Let's go on, Councilor Cogle.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one short report. The Visitors Convention Bureau met Tuesday. Highlight was meeting members from CSL International, who are advising us on preparing our destination master plan process. They're spending some time in Thurston County now, I think they're still here in town. We'll be following up later in the year to help find strengths and shortfalls and help our community find success with a destination master plan. And our steering committee will be setting up one-on-ones and focus group meetings with CSL and our community stakeholders later in November. We also saw a demonstration of how our Datify platform is used to help track tourism activity and benefits from investing in various campaigns. And there will not be a board retreat for this year 2023. Seems like the primary focus right now is, is on the steering committee's efforts and destination master plan efforts. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilor Vasquez.
Couple of quick reports. For intercity transit, they met last night. They had just brought on the largest ever new bus operator class cohort, so they hired 28 bus drivers. We've been trying to increase services, they have the funding, they have the buses, they need the drivers, so hiring 28 people at once is good news. It means we're going to be able to extend and expand services, including later bus routes to downtown areas for one, and weekend services are going to expand, so more frequent travel on buses. We are now a new census designation, so Lacey and Olympia cracked the 200,000 mark, and that means we have different obligations when we think about transit planning. So intercity transit is going to have to be doing some work around defining what a major system change is, and thinking about outreach to different parts of the community, because part of our Title VI obligations under the federal government, if we receive public funds, we have to make sure that we're delivering services in a non-discriminatory way. To do that, we have to know who we're serving, how we're serving them, and are we missing people? Like, are there people who don't have access to transit right now, and how can we improve those services for the people in need in our community? Both the, the letter of the law, doing that demographic analysis, and also the spirit of the law, making sure that people in our community have access to the bus. They're also hiring the general manager for intercity transit authority. They had 90 applicants from all over the US, international interest as well. There were bus background folks and people from the rail system background. The goal right now is to narrow the list down to four to six finalists. We're going to have them participating in a series of interviews at the end of October with community members, intercity transit authority staff, labor representatives, board members, and then finally selecting the successful candidate, hopefully in late October, early November. Thurston Regional Planning Council also had a retreat this month, and we talked a lot about the overall long-term strategic goals for Thurston Regional Planning Council. So we didn't make a lot of changes, but one of the things that got talked about a lot is not spreading the small but mighty staff of Thurston Regional Planning Council too thin. They have about 17 people, three vacancies, so a total of 20 staff, and they pull in a lot of grant funding for transportation projects and other community projects all over the county. So focusing on the things that only they can do and that they can do best, rather than trying to reach and pick up a whole bunch of stuff, so that they can't make as much progress on any one initiative. So that was one of the takeaways of that all-day Thurston Regional Planning Council retreat, and those are my reports.
Well, thank you. And we've, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. It's, it's one of those agendas that we had a lot of meat on the bone today. Obviously, there is some really historic things that just happened, but obviously with our cooperation agreement with the, the tribe is historic, and also the, the purchase of the property from St. Martin's Abbey is, is historic, and, you know, we continue to grow as, as a community, and I just really appreciate, you know, this council and all, everything that our community is doing to make Lacey the place it is. So with that, you keep it classy, Lacey. We'll call this meeting adjourned.